I'll call to order Tuesday, December 10th, City Council meeting, work session. Sorry. I need an approval of the agenda.
So moved?
Exactly.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna start this one off with a bang. Phil? The Philomena Show.
Yeah, I think I got it.
It's gonna be short.
Hi, everyone. With the farmer's market, the light's working? Did he get it?
Yeah, it's good.
One more?
One more.
I just wanna make sure you can see, but I guess you can read it up here.
Oh, that, I can see better. Can you guys all see?
Yep.
Okay, good. So this is about the past season farmer's market and let's get going here. It's not going forward, Colleen. So our mission statement has not changed. It's to enable Cannon Beach residents, visitors, and businesses to purchase fresh produce and other fresh food products in season. It is primarily a grower seller market to make available a wide variety of fresh farm products and to promote local farmers, ranchers, fishers, and artisans, producers of food, and perishable farm items to foster community activity promoting social and healthful lifestyles. And this is our market dates. It's 1:00 to 5:00 in City Hall parking lot mid-Tuesdays through the end of September. And these show our visitors' counts, and our visitors' counts are real good this year. They're, last season, 2018, we had 24,701. We're down this year to 23,868 because we were closed on September 19th because of the weather. It was not, we couldn't be out there, and we closed early on July 9th, about two, two and a half hours early. So it's about the same, given that fact. So we have good attendance, and we had fairly good weather, except for those two days were really nasty. We still have the best volunteers on the planet, and here's pictures of some of them, including councilperson Nancy and Brandon and Mayor Sam. We really appreciate all of our volunteers. I see a fair amount of you guys in the audience. Thank you from all of us, from the committee and myself. These are some of our favorite, whoops, market kids, and they're so cute. I wasn't able to show this slide last year, so I put it in this year so that everybody could see how adorable those kids are. And we do take market, market tokens are available. We proudly accept the Oregon Trail Card and WIC vouchers. You can use your SNAP card to purchase market tokens to shop with any market vendor. And thank you to the Cannon Beach Food Pantry, Barb. Thank you, for matching SNAP token purchases, up to $10 each, available at City Hall every market day. These are the vendors that we have had this year. We have 30 vendors this past season. They are not all there on every market day, but some of them, you know, kind of come in and out of the market during the season. So we've got a mix of vendors. Those are, our newest vendor would be the top-left one, the Sasquatch Sandwich Shop, and people seem to really like his sandwiches for prepared foods. These are the community groups that have participated in the market this past season. We have the Cannon Beach Rural Fire Protection District, Cannon Beach Academy, the Cannon Beach Arts Association, WOW Recycling, CLATSUP Court Appointed, typo there, sorry, CLATSUP Court Appointed Special Advocates Group, North Coast Food Web, Cannon Beach Gallery Group, North Coast Land Conservancy, Friends of Haystack Rock, KMUN, and the Reinhardt Clinic. The Reinhardt Clinic also is a new community group for us this past season. The local businesses support our music, pay part of what goes to our musicians, and they each donate, these businesses each donate at least $50, some of them more than that per season, to help with the cost of having musicians on hand for everyone's enjoyment. You have Cinder Diamond Fabric, et cetera, Brandon Ogilvy Found, Cannon Beach Vacation Reynolds, Northwest by Northwest Gallery, Cannon Beach Hotel Lodgings, Teresa's Market, Dragonfire Gallery, Ocean Lodge, The Wine Shack, and the Beachcomber Vacation Homes. Beachcomber Vacation Homes is a new, is new this past season, so we're grateful to have them join us as well. And these are our volunteers. They did 495 hours worth of volunteer work this past season. And again, that includes council members and our mayor. So we're really appreciative to have all of those people on board. It would be impossible to have this market without our volunteers. And our next market will start June 2020 and run through the end of September, so we'll see you then. That's it, unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
If volunteer hours are important, we could slow down setup. Just an idea. Okay, that was fun. Good way to start. I'll go straight to item number two, which is the vetting committee. Bruce, do you wanna?
Yes, sir.
Catch us up?
The vetting committee met yesterday. We were hoping to have some information from SRG, but we did not have it, and we will be getting it as quickly as possible. And there was further discussion about, in, let me see, an effort to try to develop some sort of a facility that might be higher out of the tsunami range, being up at the sports park area or else further up into the south wind. And I think that was about it. Is that, Barb, you remember? You were the chair.
Why wasn't I?
Yeah. Yeah, but I think, I don't know if there's anything beyond that. We're really waiting for the information on separating the police department and City Hall. That'll be a key element. So what the, the way we left it is that when I know we're gonna have the information, that I would call around and try to set up a meeting.
Bruce?
Yes.
There were about half of the committee members there.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know why. Was it that they didn't have enough notice? Was it that, that they forgot?
Well, no, I know for sure on three, Mr. Azamano was, has another project working with some World War II issues, and so he had a meeting that he had to attend in the middle of the state. The chair, Mr. Morgan, had a doctor's appointment, and Robbie Dodd let us know right away that he was gonna be out of the country.
And Gene Williams wasn't?
No, yeah, Gene, yeah, I don't know.
Unless wasn't there.
Yeah.
Unless wasn't.
Yeah. Everybody had indicated they could attend, or else, I'm sorry. Nobody had indicated they couldn't attend, and we tried to set it up around the preferred date for everyone. So I really can't explain beyond that. But I think that date was actually set when everyone was there.
Yes.
So everybody had said, yes, we could do that, except Robbie, so I don't know what happened, beyond that.
And Robbie wasn't at the second one either, so...
Well, he's been out of the country for a while. He said he would be back, I think it's like Thursday or Friday. Hopefully that's not a trend, Robin.
Yeah. I hope so, too.
Yeah.
Do we have any indication this time, Lisa, when Mike beginning that information?
Um, no.
She's still?
She is, she's dealing with a family issue and is pretty much away from work right now. She, I know that the estimator has the information, so it's just based on the estimator's schedule, and we've not heard back when that might be.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you for that. We'll move on to the park code revisions. Jillian, do you wanna come up?
I threw you under the bus. I told the boss you're next.
Hi, and thanks for your indulgence in taking, letting us take one more pass at this before the end of the year. After the last meeting, when the committee got back together, we realized that we really feel like we were on the same page with you, and we maybe just didn't articulate it. So we've added a little bit of language that we hope will clarify what I think the objection was last time, and looking at it again, I could see, could see why. So the, looking at L, we added that last line that just says, "All other activity in the parks is governed by this ordinance." So our understanding was that the intent here is to allow larger events when that's appropriate, when the city deems that's appropriate at the, at the location that the city feels would be best, and that those larger events need to be permitted, and that they'll go through a process with the city related to all the particulars, identifying all the particulars of those events, whatever they may be. But for all other activity in the parks, people coming during the day, that's first come, first served, and it'll operate as it has in the past, and would, so that all of the other elements of the code would pertain to those activities. I think some of the ones that were pointed out at the last meeting, E, D, F, those kinds of provisions would hold for any of the daily activities in the parks, people going and having smaller gatherings or just using the parks on a day-to-day basis. But for those large events, they would be defined and located through the city permitting process. And so we're hoping that by adding that last little clause at the end, "All other activity in the parks is governed by this ordinance," that would really make the distinction between the day-to-day activity that's on a first come, first served basis, and those larger events that will be governed by the city permitting process. So we just wanted to take one more pass at it, see if we could clarify, and if in fact we're, we are on the same page with that, then that would allow us to go forward with all the revisions in the code, except the discussion about horses, which is ongoing, and we'll be back in the new year with that.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't catch that from that last line?
It wasn't there last time, so it...
No, I mean, I didn't, I didn't interpret it that way.
Oh, okay.
So I guess I would just need to understand, Jeff's not here, but if somebody in the future would interpret it, that line by saying, just leaves it open for permitting to allow other stuff?
I have a suggestion, and I'm sorry I didn't think of this when we were having the discussion at the committee meeting. I think the way that it's written, I kinda see it as being conflicting, unless someplace you put in the word "except." So it's like, we'd be on a first, first come, first served basis, except for permitted events. But right now it says that it'll be first come, first served, then it talks about events in the park.
I think we're, I think our hope with doing it this way is that including "except for permitted events" might lead to some confusion, that you could have permitted events for other than really large organized events, that we've been talking about as those special kinds of occasions in the parks. The hope was that by having it, having that as separate use of the park facilities first come, first served basis, and then the exception to that is really an event of 50 or more persons, which needs to go through a city permitting process, and all other, and would be governed by that, any other activity or all other activity, meaning all of that other day-to-day activity, would be governed by this ordinance. A semicolon after location might actually make it a little clearer, so that's all part of one, one statement.
I think when you just gave your explanation, it made sense, 'cause you used the word "except."
Okay. Could we, could we say, "Except any event of 50 or more persons, which must go through a city permitting process?" Wanting to link the permitting process to events of 50 or more persons, which is, I think, what prompted the whole necessity of permitting in the first place. So, so it would, a large event would trigger the city permitting requirement. All other events need to comply with this code, and if it is a large event, that would be subject to the city permitting process.
Or 50 or more.
50 or more people. That's what would trigger the permitting and the special event.
I think Colleen might have something to say.
Well, I was just thinking that if our planning is going to review the special events, ordinance amendment, amendments about special events, that might even come into play here, that they might have another rule, or, you know what I mean, that these need to dovetail between what the planning in the parks are, are planning, are, if that in the parks are planning to do with special events.
Right.
So, anyway, I just, I know that that's coming up at the next planning commission meeting.
All right. We have had some, some conversations with the planning commission folks related to events, and they, in our, the last iteration of that, the language in the events, in the proposed events, says that any events in the parks must comply with the Parks Code. So the citywide events policy is broader. That, that covers many, many kinds of events. And there is a, there is language in it saying, "Any event occurring in a park must comply with the Parks Code," and then that would bring it back to this, which would, which would outline those two kinds of activities in the park, the under 50 persons or the over 50 persons.
Yeah. I understand where you're coming from, and I think that's a good way to do it. This line doesn't state it to me, because what I read when I read it is, "Any other activity is governed by this document." So that means it's redundant to me. It doesn't say, what I was, what I'm hearing is that the city can allow for an event through a permitting process. I think it would almost be better to state it in some way that large, exception may be made for large events as approved by the city council. And just take it to the top and just say, okay, if it's a, an event of some degree that the city wants to do, it would have to be approved by the city council. That takes it to a, that way you don't have any worry about some group coming in, being larger than 50, and wanting to supersede whatever rules are in here.
We're talking about two different things, though. I mean, does that mean that anybody has a family reunion of 50 or more people, have to get approval from the city council?
No, I didn't say that. I said, "Exception for large events planned by the city."
But that'll be addressed in the city events?
Yeah.
I think we're, I think we're trying to find this middle ground where we can speak primarily to the activity in the parks, make a reference to, to a process that allows for larger events. And our understanding was that events larger than 50, that the city really has an interest in permitting those events for a variety of reasons, so that there can be cleanup and resources, and they know where they are, and they can plan them well, and make, make provision for a larger group of people in a city park.
Okay, I hear that.
Yeah. So I think we're, we're just trying to, to speak primarily to the use in the parks, and then, and then I, I think there will be other, you know, event policy that might speak to the rest.
And I'm hearing that, it's just that that line doesn't tell me that.
Oh, yes, I'd like to see with the inclusion of the "except" that was suggested earlier in the...
Okay.
Include that and bring it to council.
So if we were, just, so I'm understanding, if we were to say, for letter L, "Usage of all park facilities are on a first come, first served basis, except..."
Except...
"...except any event of 50 or more persons, which must go through a city event permit process and must only take place with, at a city-approved location. All other activity is governed by this ordinance." All other activity, meaning all other activity except permitted events of 50 or more persons. So it would have the "except any event of 50 or more persons."
Okay. Well, I see that now. I understand that. That made sense.
Okay.
It's a split sentence or split paragraph, 'cause you got two different concepts within...
Yeah.
It would almost be better to say, "All activity in this park is governed by this ordinance. Usage of the park facilities are on a first come, first served basis." Put those two sentences together, then have the second sentence...
Except.
As an exception.
Except groups of 50 or more persons, which must go through a city permitting process, and et cetera.
Because then you don't attach this third sentence into the second sentence.
Splitting it, yeah, putting the two, okay, so if we, we'll bring all other, or "all activity in the parks is governed by this ordinance, except events consisting of 50 or more person," or "except events of 50 or more persons, which must go through a city permit process."
That, that helps. Now, before we go any further, Bob has had his hand up.
Oh, sorry.
I would, as long as we're doing my speaking on this, this is all park facilities are on a first come, first served basis, except that any event of 50 or more persons must go through the city event permit process, period. We don't need the thing about the taking place in an approved location, because that gets enforced by the, the permit that's gonna say that.
Right.
You know, this is part of the ruling. Also, I agree with you that all other activity in the park is governed by this ordinance. We don't need that. That's redundant. I, one reason for the "except" that is that usage of all park facilities actually is.
Yeah.
It is on a first come, first served basis. And, anyway, except that any event of 50 or more persons must go through the city permit process, and then the definition of the permit process is defined, you know, is given by the permit, which is, which is the city's...
Okay, that's, that's clean. I like that.
Thank you.
Barb, did you have your hand up at one point?
I did, but I think Jillian did an excellent job. I just wanna make sure that what the planning commission, their policy that they're working on, as long as it passes a statement about the parks in it, then I think we're okay. And I think Jillian explained that.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll kind of confirm that as that event policy is going through further iterations, but that's where it was left last.
I'm sure that one will go through more iterations than this one has, so...
No way. Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll, then would the process be, we'll just come back with that simplified statement?
I think so.
You think you could give that simplified statement now?
Bob could.
Do we need to bring that back to the, is, okay?
No, I don't, I just...
All right. Just to move forward.
I heard so many different iterations of that. Have you gotten my real?
No.
Use it, so what?
I'll wait till we have, I'll wait till you guys decide what it is you're gonna say.
And we need to bring it back to a meeting, anyway, right?
First.
For, as opposed to work sessions. What I had was, "Usage of all park facilities is on a first come, first served basis. Except events of 50 or more persons must go through a city event process, a city event permit process."
Great. Yeah. My thought is, if it comes back to that, we ought to be able to act on it.
Right. I do, too.
Rather than come back to the work session and, you know, delay this out for yet another month and a half.
Okay. Robin had another question.
You've probably talked about this, but wouldn't Public Works and Director be capitalized?
I believe...
The editor says no.
Oh, I see. And was Public Works posted by Public Works?
No, Public Works Director would not be...
Jay?
Director. Mm-hmm. Thanks.
My publisher says no.
So it's Public Works, and it was a little D?
Yeah, Director, I see that.
And that happens a couple times here.
We'll, we'll take a, we'll take another editorial pass for typos and grammatical things, but, yeah, thank you.
Actually, Public Works does not need to be capitalized.
Is the D in your letter?
Oh, okay. Yeah, that would be...
What is that?
To do it the way it is?
Public Works and Director do not need to be capitalized.
Yeah, Cap, Cap, and Director. Okay.
This is from the source.
Yeah. If I think it does, it does.
All right. Thank you for your patience and indulgence in hearing this again, and I think we're close.
Okay, thank you.
We may be there.
I think Karen just got demoted.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of things happening. I think Karen got demoted, and I think that we found out, I think that we found out that Nancy McCarthy is not a capitalist. I think that when I, she, she's very kind and edits some of my work, and it all comes back in lowercase. I write the whole thing in capitals, so...
Okay, we're having too much fun, so let's move to big-ticket items.
Oh, good. That's a lot.
Yeah. Because here's a buzz killer. This, this item was only put on because in the event that you wanted to have a discussion between last night's presentation and then kind of the public hearing, or the back and forth we're talking about for tomorrow. If there's nothing to discuss, that's, we just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity, if you wanted to, before you heard from the public.
I'm anxious to hear from the public, so...
I think it's good. Okay.
And I thought we had a good turnout last night.
Good day.
Yes.
Let's hope more of them come back.
And a lot of discussion afterwards.
Yeah, good. And actually, I mean, I was pleased, 'cause there was several people that could not make it, that actually wrote to apologize. I wanted to be there, and several of them are gonna try to be here on Wednesday, that could not make it on the Monday.
Okay. So you're gonna do like an abbreviated warm-up again tomorrow night, or do you want to just jump straight into it?
That's up to you. I can, it was probably like...
Might be good to do an abbreviated warm-up, because people who haven't been here...
Sure, okay. Or maybe we can make that call tomorrow, but we'll be ready to do it.
Okay. Next item is H-Wrap truck. Bruce?
Yes, we, the, obviously, the H-Wrap truck is subject to some pretty harsh conditions, being on the beach almost every day, sometimes twice a day. And so we did have some problems. It was driven down to Tillamook Ford to have them take a look at it, and they said, "We can't let you drive it back." The front end has to totally be rebuilt, and the brakes, steering, all those components. And so they told us, the initial estimate is $7,000. And so we held off moving forward with that work. We have a donor that has come forward and said that, and they need to do this in two pieces, but that they would, they plan to donate $15,000 towards the purchase of a new truck. And so that puts us in a little bit better position. I'm not sure, a five-year-old truck and rebuilding it, if that's necessarily the best way to go on that. But we do have the opportunity to potentially buy a new truck, and because of some vacancies we've held open and things in H-Wrap, we can make up the difference, and it'll be like maybe 19, maybe 1905, something like that, would be the difference on it. And then we would dispose of the truck, or we've also had conversations with the county about them possibly doing some of our bigger work. And so if we can get that done for less, then sell the truck, you know, in better condition than what it is now.
I'm confused. What do you mean by the county doing our bigger work?
Well, a major project like this, when I talked to some folks at the county about it to get some advice on what to do, they said that, you know, "We, we can do that job for much less than $7,000."
Oh, I see.
And so we've had discussions about that, and it's kind of opening up the discussion that if we have some major work on some of our vehicles, would the county be willing to, you know, bid on that, or whatever. So that just creates another opportunity. We're kind of, we could potentially take a little bit more time on this, but if we want to take advantage of buying the new truck and using the funds, we really have to make a decision very quickly so that person can make their financial plans. And once we do that, I think we have an obligation to follow through with it. So some of these other things I think we can look at, to try to find out the best way to position the city as far as disposing of the truck, that we come out as best we can. I can't tell you I have those answers right now, but... you I have those answers right now, but, um, there, there's a short timeframe on us making this decision.
Was this anticipated in the budget?
No.
Okay, this.
No, but again, there, I've talked to Lori, and she said, "We will have $19,000 left over at the end of this year," so it would all come out of the H-Wrap budget. That, we don't have to go to other sources.
Now, when you say a new truck, doesn't that mean a new used truck?
No.
Brand new truck?
Yes. It'd be probably an F-250, red.
Can we make sure it gets undercoating this time?
Yes. Yeah, and I'm not sure this one wasn't undercoated, but definitely, um, I talked to Jason, and he said that the, they undercoat their cars, and they're not quite on the B, quite as much, but they're lasting much longer. So, that's something that I think we need to just make part of our general operation.
Yeah. I don't know if there's any resources for fleet purchasing?
That's what we're doing. We actually, when we buy on state contract, the prices we get are extremely low. So, um, for example, we just bought a new F-250, not the crew cab, doesn't have the back doors, but it has seats in the back, and for, for $32,000. And that's a pretty good price. But that, that's the buying power of everybody in the state buying from that dealership.
Okay, well, it's the best we can do. I would say move forward on. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
And that's a very generous thing.
It really is, and yeah, yeah. And it's, I think it's kind of a family member from somebody that is a volunteer at H-Wrap.
That's one.
Yeah, it really, it's very cool.
Uh, truck, bond referral schedule?
Uh, up until, actually, even currently, we've been talking about going for a, a May referral. And you know that the schedule says that we'll be making decisions in January and February. And for that to happen, we would be continuing to work with bond counsel and our financial advisor, all those kind of things. And it doesn't seem like we're going to make that timeframe. And so, I would like to officially get direction that we're not going to be go, you know, we don't plan to go in May. I don't see how, or, yeah, I don't see how we could have everything done by January, February. So, with that, if we can say, "We're not going for February anymore," or, I'm sorry, for May anymore, then we can stop that other operation. As long as we're tentatively going for May, then we continue to have those expenses to try to put together resolutions and financial projections, that kind of thing.
I would easily say we're not going for May.
Right, okay.
Pretty clear, a question, are there ongoing expenses while they just sit there waiting for our decision?
No, no, but for us, we've not completed the resolution, for example, and they've not taken the steps that they need to review the program because it's probably going to be referenced in, in the ordinance, that kind of stuff. So, we've only done very preliminary things. They sent us a draft of an ordinance that they normally use, that kind of thing. But there were decisions that needed to be made. Are we, you know, do, are we going to select a particular model or a particular location, that kind of thing? All that stuff gets plowed into it, and those all have to be finalized, sometimes, sometime in January. You take action by the middle of February, and then that can get you on a referral in May. But if we're not going to do that, but, I'm sorry, again, if you're telling us that we are shooting for that, then I would keep on working to make sure that we would have what you need to do it. I just, it doesn't seem to me that that's going to be what happens. I would like to be relieved of that by making the decision.
You are relieved.
Thank you.
So are we.
Brandon, I can't tell you.
Just say that.
Yeah, I can't tell you how relieved I am, Brandon.
We're all relieved.
Yes, okay, that's, that's all that I need from them.
Okay.
Is there a way we can sort of go about this? This has happened now three times, and I think we all sort of predicted this on the outset, is that maybe we could wait until this process has gotten a little further along and then start worrying about scheduling out the bond referral?
Yeah, because otherwise, there's a pressure occurring to get something done that we don't have.
Well, it's what's happened so far.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think we can, we'll know when we get to a point where we're getting comfortable with a direction.
Mm-hmm.
And at that point, we, we still got time to get plans and stuff together, and we'll have, you know, since you have that opportunity twice a year, technically.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's.
We're never any more than six months away.
Right, except for maybe next year.
Actually, about ten months away, Brandon.
Okay.
Because that's, that's when we have to be done, or we have to start to get, to meet the, like, the three or four months ahead.
Yeah.
Of course, the, the cost continues to increase too, in terms of construction costs and.
Yes.
All of those things. If we take that into, you know, into account, then it's better to be, be prepared and try to brush it.
Yeah, okay. Last item, committee chair training. Colleen's been pushing a calendar. We have talked about having a council chair and council, or committee chairs and council training program in February.
Our city attorney is pretty open in February. She hasn't made any other commitments yet, so she thought if, if we could pick a date, then she said, "Put that in a book and then there won't be any conflict." So, um, we do have some evening meetings in February, like we have the IRB on the 20th and the planning on the 27th, and there's another meeting on the 12th, which might go into the evening, starts at four. And whether you want to tack it on, well, the thing is too, it's not just the council, we've got to look at giving plenty of notice and picking a date for all of those committee chairs because, you know, most of them might work, or they've got their own schedules too. So, um, if you could, if you've got your schedules out, if you could give me a date to shoot for, that would be.
So there is something on the 12th at four?
There's, um, there's a meeting on the 12th at four, starts at four, but it's scheduled to go till 5:30. But, um, that's the watershed council meeting, and we can meet in the conference room.
Thanks, Colleen.
Would any of the chairs be in that meeting? Would you be in that meeting? I would be in, so maybe we don't want to.
But even if we were to start at six, because it's a ninety-minute, Ashley is, you know, and that's not a meeting that would go beyond ninety minutes that much, so.
Not to just make two dates that are, that are out, and that's like the DRB and the planning.
Yeah. Um, and then our meetings too. Our meetings would probably, yeah, yeah, yeah. But any, I'm, I'm open, so, other than our meetings. Anybody else have any dates to throw out there?
No, nothing that I know of now.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a suggestion, if you can give us, like, two or three dates, then we can float them to the chairs, and then we'll pick the one that most of them can commit to.
Are you talking about an evening meeting or afternoon?
Evening, just because we're, we don't know who's working and who's not and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
I think that middle week is the best one to work with. The 10th.
11th, 13th?
10th, 11th, 12th, 13th, or 14th. I'm just shooting, shooting here so we can give Ashley some.
You have your workshop, work session on the 11th.
On the 11th, so that, that one don't work.
How about the 10th?
Why not just pick the, that week of the 17th?
A Tuesday, or, or three days within that week?
Yeah.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, coffee with the council, that's, sorry, we'll have coffee in the evening, too.
You can stay all day if you want.
Sure.
Okay, so give Ashley the 17th, 18th, and 19th, and see how she can work with those.
We're looking at 6:00 P.M.
6:00 P.M.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Well, is there a holiday, is there a holiday on the?
Where would it be, the 14th?
President's Day.
Okay.
Would that be with school?
For some people, it is.
Yeah, that'd be Friday. I think that's Friday, isn't it, the 14th?
Oh, 17th.
17th, okay, yeah.
Valentine's Day is Friday.
Okay, that's right. Yeah, let's not do that.
Always around that, that weekend. President's Day is always around that weekend.
So that would be a three-day.
For some people.
Okay, that's, that's it for the agenda. Anything for the good of the order?
Yes.
Um, I'll, actually, I'll start. Colleen, you gave me the schedule or the evaluation form thing?
Right, um, you all have a copy of the schedule and a blank evaluation form because we're, we postponed the city manager evaluation for two months, so it's in November, December, it's January, February. So, the first exec session would be your first meeting in January, January 7th and 5th, and for the exec session with Ashley. And she writes the notes, like, you know, you're not giving them numbers. Probably did it last year, that's why doing it again this year. So, um, the setup, like a show on May, we, we want to maybe, I don't know, you might want to use that evaluation to jot your own notes or something like that. And then meet with her at 5:00 P.M. We'll have, the notices will be going out, you know, officially, you know, later this month. But, um, and then you'd all agree that if we needed more time, that you would meet prior to the work session.
14th.
On 14th, to finish it off. And then she would write up everything, and then in February, before the regular meeting in February, that would be the 4th, that's when there'd be an executive session with Bruce and the council and Ashley to then discuss everything, and then come to the regular meeting, adopt the evaluation, and, and the merit raise. And that would all be done in the regular meeting. That's all in your schedule there, but that's why you have those papers, is just so you can, you know, take some notes.
Okay.
How about the retreat? Are we talking about that yet?
Uh, we haven't set a date for that. If you want to, we can shoot for that.
In February?
Or late January? I'm, I'm open for late January myself. I think the earlier we get this done, before the budget process starts, the better for staff.
And you didn't want to have it on a weekend?
I, yeah, it's a challenge for me. If it's a challenge for anybody else, I'm more flexible, I suspect, but.
Would it be all day?
It could be. We've done that in the past, or we've also split it up in the past, so I don't know how anybody feels.
I'm comfortable with the one day.
One day?
I think I'd rather have it in one day because then we're really focused on what we're doing.
Okay.
Do you want it outside of city hall, or do you want it in city hall?
I think you'd like it outside, it's a little more private. It is a public meeting.
Yes, it is.
It is definitely a public meeting.
No, it's just someplace that has ADA access, like, like we've been doing it. Ask if you have a preference, let me know.
Yeah, a place that's comfortable.
It's warm.
Warm.
No hard chairs.
Like, if we're going to sit all day, maybe these chairs down there would be good.
Didn't, uh, told Avana Hall last time, and them's chairs were a little hard, but we could haul these down if we needed to.
I'm probably gonna do it right here.
I don't know. I've always appreciated just having that different atmosphere, you know.
If I could check, if you could give me a few dates, maybe I could check, like, with Cross the Way and the Haste Act Gardens, something we usually bring in lunch, and if you pay for lunch with that group, then the room is free, and it's close but not, you know, but you're still away. But I'd need to call them around and see what's open in different places. So if you give me kind of an idea, a few dates, then I can check for some places and see what's available.
Is Thursday or Friday, 30th, 30th, either of those?
I probably don't want to do it on New Year's Eve, but.
That's probably where I'd, I would.
Um, Wednesdays are better for me.
Yeah, Wednesdays are better for me. I have a, my usual commitment on Thursday afternoons that I could get out of, but I'd rather not. But Wednesdays are fine.
I'm okay with Wednesday.
How early do we?
Early.
So, but I can work around it.
So what are the Wednesdays, 22 and 29?
22, 29.
And throw in the 30th if we have to. I suppose as a last possible.
And your preferences, which, like, 29 is that?
Prob, probably number one would be 29. Okay. And I suppose if, if locations don't quite work, we can always meet in the chamber room or the council.
No, not in there, not for a whole day.
Nope.
No way.
Get running.
She wants her oxygen.
Yes, amazing, isn't it?
Um, and again, I said this last night, send me, or, excuse me, send Colleen your topic items for the agenda, and we'll compile them.
Oh, yes, thank you, Sam.
Okay, anything else? Good of you, or, Bruce?
I'm sorry, Robin has something.
Okay, at the December 3rd city council meeting, I requested that the Harding accessory structure located on the Nicholson property go through the proper process as dictated by the building code. And I was hoping that we could put it on, um, as an item for January to discuss.
For the, for the work session?
Yes. Or how, how, what's the most appropriate?
Nothing like we.
Well, the city has to go through, have you gone through your process yet?
No, but I want to.
Update on the process.
Before, I would say that we can come to a meeting. I think that I want to make sure that the information that we find, it's, it's very unusual to go through an enforcement process and then air it publicly. So, I want to make sure that there's no issues with us doing that. Uh, we can make sure, you know, we can let folks know what the outcome was, but to actually come here and then present evidence and all that sort of thing, that, that I don't know it's a problem, but it, I feel like it could be. And so, I would want to make sure on that before we would do a public hearing of it.
How about an executive session?
Yeah.
I think, for us to do an executive session, there would have to be pending litigation.
Yeah.
And I don't think we have that at this point. Uh, pending enforcement action, I don't think qualifies for that.
I just don't want it to drop off the radar. I think it's really important. And so, I'd like to make sure that every work session, we consider that to be on the agenda at a proper time.
I think if we, initially, if we just called it an update, then we can make sure we can at least give you some information on it. Um, where my only concern is that when we get to the end, that when we're ready to take action, I don't know about it being at a public meeting where things are disclosed.
So, I guess I'm confused about taking action. I was hoping it would go, go through the process of going through the planning commission.
I don't know if it goes to the planning commission on an, from an enforcement standpoint. I think that it's possible that after action is taken, and if there needs to be correction, it might go to the planning commission. But I don't, I, I'm not sure if the planning commission has a, that kind of a regulatory authority.
I'm pretty sure when that happened up in Surf Pines, that it did go through that process.
With which case?
Uh, there was a building that was built too tall in Surf Pines, and.
That's county.
That's Surf Pine.
It's, it's county, yeah, but it's a similar.
Well, I just want, I, I know what you're looking for. I just want to make sure we can do it, and I just want to put out a caution. Let us, um, I can get an email to you as far as what that process will be, so you'll know as, you know, as we're, you know, going through it. And it may result in it going. in it going to the planning commission, it may come to you, I don't know.
How do we know, if we can't have a meeting and discussion, how do we know that the issues that, let's say, license, or the other councils, how do we know those issues are being addressed in this process? How do we know what is considered, what is being, what violations are being looked at without having an opportunity to talk about it?
One on one with staff is the best.
Yeah, and there's a lot of complications with this. For example, some of the things that are being cited as violations are not that clear in our code when you look at what the definition for something is. The other is that the property owners have let us know that they're quite upset with the allegations, and they may want to take some sort of action on it, too, as far as what the things that are being alleged. So, as the city, we have to be very careful moving forward with this.
If it's not clear in the code, why was it approved?
I'm talking about when you're, with, for example, accessory structure, or even the thing of a garage, or second floor, second story, there are no, those things aren't clear as we would like it to be, and what can go into, you know, what defines a unit. From what I understand, it's pretty clear, well, it's not clear, but you can go up and have a bedroom and, you know, everything, just don't have a kitchen. And it doesn't violate what we have. So, and again, I'm not the authority on this, but in the conversations I've had, those are some of the difficulties in trying to sort it out.
Well, you're looking at the building as being something that might or might not be acceptable. When you do the PUD, there was nine thousand square feet that was approved for four building sites. This is a fifth. It should, it's a different creation within the PUD, and that's why I think it's something that needs to be really scrutinized, because I don't like that this might go and be a precedence for something else.
Yes. Yeah, and I agree and understand that, but there's also been discussion about whether somebody's living upstairs, that kind of thing. We run into definition issues. The PUD should have been very clear on the spaces that you're talking about, the number of buildable lots, that kind of thing. So that's one issue we can look at on it. Then there are other things about the use. And I've heard probably about the appropriateness of allowing the structure to be there, but also about the use. And the use, we're definitely-
Where it's located, it's an easement.
Right.
For the whole PUD. It's not for one particular building.
Yes.
Allocated to a certain owner.
Yes.
Was it, was it built by the person who initiated the PUD in the first place, or was it built by another couple? I thought it was built by another couple.
I, it's-
The Hardens didn't even own the property when, when this-
When it was built?
When it was approved.
When it was approved.
By the city council. Right, Mike?
Yeah, well, the PUD was approved by the council, which defined the four lots and how many square feet in total could be built, go there. Also required that a HOA be developed, or they change the name to an agreement on how to be maintained, the common space. It also identified, I believe, ten parking spaces for the PUD and two for the neighbor. And that's, it looks to me like that's where they built the garage and the parking, is in that easement, the parking that was approved in the PUD. So, it's, to me, the issue isn't so much the building itself, but how it got there.
Right, right.
And the same neighbor, and the plan violates the planned development.
It's just that we have to follow, you know, the law, we have to follow procedures, and so I don't want to promise that we will send something, you know, bring a whole case to you, or it'll go to the planning, you know, the commission. It'll have to be how it, the normal procedure for something like this. And there are clearly multiple issues. There are things that probably all of us wish we would have been more clear on the PUD, because, you know, things aren't that clear. And I think that it's also identified some other issues, like some of the definitions that we have, that, you know, if I was to say, you know, an upstairs unit, I think everybody would know what I'm talking about, but it doesn't, we don't necessarily have a definition of an upstairs unit. So-
So, is the explanation that, well, you allowed parking spaces at this spot, and this garage just happens to be a-
I don't, I don't know. I don't know how it was permitted after, you know, I mean, frankly, I've not looked at it at all, so I don't even know if it was permitted, but it's, I think that it's actually even more complicated than what we're talking about now.
Weisman is very involved.
Pardon?
In the approval of that planned development.
Mm-hmm.
Us, you know, probably still not, probably.
I think we need to, before we get, I think we're getting into waters where we're exploring something that needs to go through the investigation process. We, it is happening, and we can make sure that it continues to happen at that level. If that winds up with either them suing us or us suing them, then it becomes a litigation, and we need to stay out of that until that happens.
Right.
There's no real appeal process to us, that I know of, this is, because, like you said, the planning commission is not a regulatory body.
Well, they're regulatory, but I don't think they're enforcement.
Not in that sense.
Enforcement, yeah.
Enforcement, that's what I meant. But there will be a time when we can look at what went wrong with that and how it happened, and we can start looking at definitions, and if we have to, look at the PUD system again.
Yeah. And Robin, I'm not talking about, you know, completely keeping you folks in the dark on it. We can investigate what happened. This is when the permit, this is who requested the permit, this is what the PUD says, that kind of thing. And we can, we can get that to you. So this is factually what occurred. But if there's to be enforcement or something going on out of that, then I, then I don't know how to say what we can bring and what we can't. But as far as factually, what occurred in that situation, what should have been allowed, what was requested, what was built, is, you know, are those things different? We can provide that. So that's kind of the factual of what happened. But there's, if we were to bring it to you, I don't think that you could say, okay, we'll take action to this, or do this, because we're going to be advised on what the process is, and if we don't follow process, we get in more trouble than anything. But we'll get, that information, as far as what occurred, Robin, we'll get to you as quickly as we can.
We need to have stronger rules, and we need to be able to have a process that people can depend on. As a realtor, it's really important.
And we agree, and one of the things that Jeff has said, we'll never do another PUD, that there's just so many-
Right now, someone could.
Right. Yeah, and that's part, a lot of what we're talking about, is how to go ahead and correct some of the problems.
Okay.
Because there were, there were openings there.
Last chance. Anything else for good of the order?
I do, I do, I'm sorry. I don't think I got to go. Okay. First of all, you now have fifteen applicants for the STR group. We were a little bit light on that before. We'll still be accepting applications until December 31st, so we may have more. We're planning on bringing it to the January meeting for appointments, so you should have at least fifteen when we get ready to do appointments. And we're anticipating their first meeting to occur in February of 2020. So that's moving along. Another thing that I'm requesting is that when we look at Christmas week, Christmas Eve, and Christmas Day, staff has off, and very frequently, there's just this one-day kind of lingering in the middle. And last year, we gave, we agreed to close City Hall on that kind of a lingering day. So this happens to be December 23rd. It's always a very light day. Everybody else is off doing whatever, and so I would like your permission to close City Hall on that day. And so the people that would be working would have that day off. But also, people, for example, firefighters and, you know, that sort, I'm not saying firefighters, but police officers, then, they would also be granted a personal day if they can't have that particular day off. So that's how we would balance things out for folks. So it's, I'm just requesting the closing of City Hall on the 23rd. I think it'll have a minimal impact, and, but it is your call.
I'm grateful.
Good point.
Okay. Staff would be great, very grateful. I have not said anything to them yet, but they'll be very grateful again this year. Thank you. That's all I have.
Is everybody except Karen, right?
No, Karen's got to work every day. No, actually, Trevor.
Twenty-four seven.
Yeah, Trevor's twenty-four seven, too, so. And Rusty is starting to feel that way. Thank you.
Okay, then, we are adjourned. Thank you.